We're on.
When you're ready.
All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 26th, 2023 meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Jeff Benton, President of the Board this year. To my left is fellow Commissioner and Vice President Gary Merrill. To my right is fellow Commissioner Barb Lewis. And today we have Administrator Tracy Davies, Deputy Administrator is Don Houston, Eric Hostetler, our Clerk Sir Ali Glucic, and Jennifer Walraven. We can begin.
Resolution number 23-902, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held October 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 23-902. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 23-903, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 1025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 23-903. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-904, in the matter of approving travel expense request.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 23-904. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-905, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of annexation petition from Agents for the petitioner, Aaron Underhill Esquire, David Hodge Esquire, and Eric Zartman Esquire, requesting annexation of 498.167 acres of land in Trenton Township to the city of Sunbury.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 23-905. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-906, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of annexation petition from Agents for the petitioner, Aaron Underhill Esquire, David Hodge Esquire, and Eric Zartman Esquire, requesting annexation of 378.595 acres of land in Trenton Township and Berkshire Township to the city of Sunbury.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 23-906. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-907, in the matter of scheduling the special commissioners sessions for the 2024 budget hearing, starting at 1:30 PM Monday, November 6, 2023, and continuing through Thursday, November 9, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 23-907. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Item number eight, we have a guest from ODOT with District 6.
Welcome, Tony.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. Looking okay? Are you guys seeing the slideshow or are you seeing the video?
We're not seeing anything.
That's all right. How about now? Yep. Thanks for having us.
There we go. There we go. If you could identify yourself, we're recording it, so appreciate it. Thanks, Tony.
Good morning. I'm Tony Terawski. I'm the District 6 Deputy Director. I cover eight central Ohio counties, including Delaware. And with me I have Hannah Salem, our Public Information Officer. So good chance for her to meet some folks here. And really today I'd just like to share some information on different projects and studies we have going on in the county, and also be available to answer any questions you might have. So I definitely just want to start by acknowledging and thanking the Commissioners as well as the County Engineer for their partnership. A lot of these projects wouldn't happen without their work and also funding and support. So definitely a good partnership, and I want that to continue. So.
Thank you.
All right. And really, I just want to start who we are. We're about 400 staff in central Ohio. Within Delaware County, we have two facilities and 27 dedicated maintenance workers. So they're doing things like snow and ice control, mowing, routine maintenance. And in doing that, anything to do with the interstate is ours. Anything to do with state and US routes outside of cities is ODOT's responsibility. We do have some overlap within cities on those routes where we take care of the structures, and also we help out the municipalities with resurfacing and other projects where we help them access federal dollars. So that's kind of the scope of our work. Obviously, we try to help with anything to do with transportation in the area, but those are our bread and butter activities. Gives you an idea of how many people we have. We're looking pretty good going into snow and ice season. We have a full crew in Delaware County. If anybody is interested in a seasonal position with us and has a CDO, we will still take anybody else who's interested. So. But we're feeling pretty good going into it. I'll also start with a plug, just for one piece of information I think is useful for the public. We have a tool called OGO, O-H-G-O, and you can just search it and open up on your phone. We also have an app. But I have up on screen here just to capture from the interchange out at 36 and 71. And what it does is it shows you every day what the travel time conditions are. You can bring up our cameras to see what's going on. So if I get a phone call from Hannah in the evening and say, hey, there's a broken down vehicle and we need to close the interstate, I can pull up the camera and see what's going on. For the general public, it's more useful. They can put in their commute and they can get information about when we're going to be doing lane restrictions, different things like that. It's just a good way to get live information and understand what's going on. If you hear through the rumor mill that, hey, 36 is closed due to a gas line, you could pull this up and actually get the actual information. Is it open or closed right now? Instead of something from three hours ago making its way around social media. Free to use. You don't even need the app. You can just open up in your phone and get some good information. I'll go into some project updates first. And the first one is obviously just outside on the east side of Delaware. And anyone who's not familiar, the Point Project is a collaboration between the City of Delaware and ODOT with funding from our safety program, from our Transportation Review Advisory Council. Certainly, City of Delaware has a big part to play. There's an earmark. A lot of different funding sources came together to make this happen. It's going to be a good project. It's going to actually widen the roadway underneath to five lanes. And it's going to make it a little easier to merge as you come in on 36. And what you're seeing today is a pretty rough old railroad bridge. And what it's going to look like when we're done, that's kind of a little more bird's eye view there, is a lot, a lot better opening kind of entrance to the city of Delaware, much more befitting what we're seeing out here today. And you kind of look, you're actually looking from, say, from the Meyer side of the structure, looking into the town, and you can see that you'll have two lanes on 36, two lanes for 37, and some turn lanes. So that should, you know, really help with a lot of the backups they're going into town every day in the afternoon rush. And it'll also, actually also help people coming off 23 to leave and go east on William Street. So it should be a good project. What you're seeing so far is hopefully not too much traffic impact, because most of the work they're doing, this is an aerial view from September, is building embankments and a temporary bridge to move train line over to the east. So they'll build that, they'll build that bridge, and then they'll get at the original bridge, demolish it, build a widened out structure, and then demolish the temporary bridge. And that's necessary because there's about 30 trains a day on that route, obviously essential for commerce. So it's taking a little bit of time, but hopefully it's not too bad for motorists going through there. And when we're done, we'll have a lot better for vehicles, and also we'll have some good pedestrian connections. A lot of people are walking from town out to Meyer and that, you know, those, those businesses, and now they'll have a wider, safer way to get out there. And it also works out on 521 out to about Bowtown Road. So you'll see some of that work in the coming year.
Tony, how does the eastbound traffic on 37 turn left onto eastbound 36?
It's still going to be a signal.
Oh, there will be a signal there? Okay.
I think they're leaving most of that in place if I remember right. I don't know if you can quite see it on that photo, but yeah, there still will be a signal, but it'll be, you have a lot more storage space. And if you ever go, you see people kind of get stuck behind other cars, kind of waiting to get through that pinch point. So it should make it quite a bit better.
Okay.
And I can share some, some planned views that show it more clearly afterwards if anyone's interested.
Okay. What's the timeline on that? Maybe you're going to get to that.
Sure. Yeah, most of the work for the new bridge will be next year, and they should wrap up most of that by the end of the year. They will have some cleanup and resurfacing that following season of first half of 2025.
So you think most of it will be done by the end of next year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. I think we're expecting to demolish the existing bridge in the first half of winter next year. So they'll do an overnight closure of 36, 37, kind of in the dead of night, so we don't impact traffic too much and can do that work safely.
Okay. Good.
Working, working through, City of Delaware's been a very good partner on public outreach. We'll talk with them and set that when we get to that point.
Yeah.
We're going to stay on the 36 corridor, and actually, all three of the projects I'm talking about are all shale and sand. This is actually at the interchange with 36, 37, and I-71. And that bridge is aged, needs repaired. And what we're doing, we, we actually have a longer term interchange improvement out there I'll talk about later that's a couple of years out. But we really didn't want to wait on this bridge work. So what we're doing, you can see them doing a little bit of work in front of the McDonald's right now, if you've driven out there today, what they're doing, if you can see my cursor, is, let's see if that shows up. Yeah, I apologize for that. But basically, in front of the Ronald McDonald statue, they're building a temporary retaining wall, because they're building, very similar to what you see out at 36 and Old State, they're building a, basically a U-turn. And the reason we're doing that is when they build the bridge, they're going to have to close some of those turn lanes, the left turn lanes in the center of the bridge to get access to the structure. So they'll take themselves, they'll take them, see the red arrows? We'll have to close those direct left turns, and we'll take vehicles just a little bit down the road and do a U-turn back, and we'll size it for trucks so people can navigate it safely. But it'll prevent backups that could cause a risk where traffic would back up onto the freeway. So it's really that west to south movement and east to the north. So they'll have that temporary widening. It'll give them room to work and hopefully keep traffic moving. And we're going to have a pretty big public outreach push as we come to the, to the season next year to really explain it, and maybe drive through that, and maybe use some videos from our, our Old State and 36 intersections. I'll bring a photo of that. If you've been out there, you basically, you'll, it allows people to keep moving and do a U-turn, and we'll, we'll try to show them how to navigate it and hopefully, usually the first week or two, people learn it. It's a little struggle, but they, they get the hang of it. So. Construction did begin in June. Apologize I didn't update that, but most of the work is going to be next season, where they're actually, they're actually replacing the beams on the structure, and there's going to be a Berkshire Township, we call it a vandal fence. It protects traffic underneath if anyone ever were to throw something off the bridge. We put that up on our new structures. But they're going to have Berkshire Township up on that, similar to other locations in the metro. So they funded that. So I'm pretty excited for that one. Any, any questions? Should be a good, just kind of take care of things, and it'll be done ahead of the other project, the interchange expansion. And then just a little bit east of that is a safety project. We've collaborated with Chris and his team at US 36 and Galena Road. And you can see they're doing a little bit of work right now where they're widening, building some temporary pavement. That's what those trenches are. And the bulk of it next year, they'll widen, add turn lanes to every leg of that intersection, and also modernize the signal, make it safe. So. Should be a good thing. It's, it's, really should be most of the season next year, and you'll see a lot of good progress where things will open up.
Is that building on the, that'd be the northeast corner, is that going to go away?
It is. It was purchased by us for the project. Yep.
And you see the timetable on that is...
End of next year.
End of next year.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Another important intersection.
Yeah.
So it'll be under construction while the interchange is at the same time?
Yep. Yep, it's been good. We've collaborated with Chris and his team. They actually worked on Carter's Corner and 36 last year, and they had some, some brief detours on Carter's Corner over to Galena, if I remember correctly. And then we'll have the reciprocal. We'll take traffic over to Carter's Corner. So they couldn't be going on at the same time because they, local traffic needed to use the adjacent intersection. So we've coordinated that way. So made a lot of good progress on 36 over the years, and we'll continue to do, do so at each of these intersections. So. Another intersection in the eastern part of the county. I'm very excited to see this. There's been a series of fatalities at 605 and Fancher going a long way back. So what we've actually been able to do is fund and design a roundabout to be constructed out here. This actually predated the Intel announcement. It was just a straight safety funded project. The contract will be opening here, opening bids in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll expect construction next season. What we're going to do, let me make sure I get the numbers right. We're going to set a maximum closure for 40 days, and we're going to provide an incentive to the contractor to try to do it faster. They usually don't do much faster than 25 days for a roundabout, more like 30, but we're trying to give them a, an incentive, a carrot, to try to do the work quickly and minimize the, the impact to the public. So it's going to be a good one, and that, Fancher Road and 605 have, you know, increased importance as we see Intel come out of the ground next to it. So that'll be fortuitous to have this improvement built. And then that's, that's mostly what we're going to see next season. Future ODOT projects we have in development. We've had a series of public meetings out at the interchange, the proposed interchange expansion. And if anyone's not familiar in the audience, we're basically going to be widening it out, making it similar to Polaris and Gemini, where you have a second bridge, a second set of ramps. It'll connect to the existing road just east of Allen Creek, and there'll also be a Sunbury Parkway, an extension over to, I'm showing my age here, the Shoah Plant over in Sunbury. So. We actually went in front of track yesterday, and I believe Rob Riley with the County Engineers Office spoke with our team to try to get some construction funding towards that. I know the county has a lot of, a lot of money invested in this and has been a very good partner all the way through. The Transportation Improvement District has led the design. So really great, and it's been a big benefit to us to advance this project. And we're, we're hopeful we'll get good news on the funding and try to push it forward.
Yeah, this one's very important to the county, not only for safety and congestion, but also economic development, particularly the Berlin Business Park and North Star areas. Yeah. We really appreciate the help and the partnership on that, Tony.
Yep. Very good one. And just, if I haven't said it already, the, the construction ask is for the light blue. It'll build the new bridge and some ramp connections and also extend Wilson Road. So it'll give some good important connectivity, and we're continuing to advance the other phases as well. But that's the, the first bite of the apple. Another important safety improvement will be in 2024. And we have, we had a couple of different safety improvements along 315. The one I'm going to highlight here is Hyatt's Road. So right now it's a four-way stop, and it does tend to back up, but we also have people potentially running through that stop sign. So roundabouts are a proven safety countermeasure. People walk away from any accidents in them typically because it's a slow speed. So that's going through the design process now. It's fully funded for construction. And again, I anticipate we'll put that one on a pretty short timeline to minimize how long 315 is closed. I know it, it is frustrating. The 315 has been closed multiple times over the years. It's definitely an aged road, and it's seeing a lot of traffic. So we try to, try to minimize how long we impact people, but we also need to take care of what we have out there. So we've seen a lot of drainage structures that suddenly pop up, and we were able to do those repairs with our forces. That's what was causing it to be closed. I think it was last week. So this should be a good project, and we'll coordinate it with adjacent work. I think the County Engineer has some work to the west on, I think, all the roads over there. Home Road, I think we talked about. So try to make sure we try to jump around the county and stay out of each other's way. So should be a good one. We do also have an improvement on 315 in Geowith planned. It'll be a little bit smaller roundabout to try to fit within the available land. We're very pinched up against the river right there, so we'll, we'll do that, and that should be a good improvement as well. It's not quite as far along as this project, but we, we're going to make our best effort to try to build them at the same time, again, to minimize how long 315 is closed. Talked a little bit about 23 Connect with different people in the room. We actually have active public engagement going on. So we've held a Community Partners Meeting yesterday at Delaware Township, and we'll have others in the future. And then actually, public meetings coming up by the end of the month, and I'll, I'll read off a couple of those. We had a meeting yesterday. We have some public meetings on November 8th, the 14th, and the 16th. They're in person at Nationwide Hotel. They're at 750 and 23, and also at the fairgrounds, and also online, trying to go to people where they're at, right? Try to be close to them physically, or if they want to be online, they're able to participate. And really, the point of this phase is we're looking at improving the existing corridor with a big focus on safety. We also want to push traffic through, but we want to, we want to reduce the number of serious injuries and fatalities. I think there's been eight in the last couple of years out in this corridor, and that's, that's far too many. So we're really focusing on that, and I have the northern portion of the corridor highlighted because we were actually able to procure design money to look at 229, Coover, Hills Miller, the, I forget the name of the roadway, but it goes to Big Lots and the County Government Building, Panhandle, and also Pennsylvania Avenue. So those are pretty congested. There are safety issues, and we're trying to develop improvements there pretty quickly. We will continue to pursue things south of Delaware, but those were the ones that we felt were pretty, pretty achievable pretty quickly. So you'll see us going out to the public after the first of the year for those specific projects. And this current round of outreach will inform what we do out there. In most of these meetings, we actually have pretty big role plots. We show the menu of here's the different things that are going to address traffic, and we can basically let people see, you know, here's a small improvement. Maybe we turn an intersection into a right in, right out, or consolidate driveways. Or here's a big fix, maybe build an interchange. You know, they have maybe more or less impact, more or less benefit. How do we choose the right thing, and not just do a one-size-fits-all for the whole corridor? So that's really the focus of the current outreach period. So definitely encourage anyone who's interested to come on out and let us know what you think. So. Any questions on that? I know there's, it's 23 miles from Waldo to Worthington. There's a lot of roadway there and a lot of interest and a lot of people. So we're definitely staffing it up so we can get, get some good interaction.
I see Connie, I know she was there yesterday, as I was.
Yeah, Tony, I know one thing we've talked about, and it's way into the future, but the, kind of the Glen Road Parkway extension all the way up connecting to the west to 23. Is that part of this, this discussion to figure out that path?
It's not necessarily, well, it's not to figure out that path, but we do have it considered as we understand if there is a new connection, we, we account for that traffic and that potential diversion, really kind of focusing on the existing corridor and the current intersections. But trying to look at those and other projects along the way. If we know there are developments that are going to dump in additional traffic, we try to account for that in our model. So.
Okay.
And then just to talk a little bit about Intel, I know this slide's very busy, but it's just a map of the most recent announcement. The DeWine-Houston Administration invested about 90 million additional dollars, and this is a lot of local system. The green dollars are actually for physical construction projects. And the ones I'll highlight in Delaware County, and actually, they're, they're shared between the county, Licking County and Delaware County, and that's a, a good example of partnership, but around about at 36, 30, excuse me, at 37 and County Line Road, and then going down County Line Road to Fancher, and also Duncan Plain slash Center Village. So there, you know, there's safety improvements to also push traffic through. It should be a good improvement for everyone, and hopefully mitigate some of the need, some of the additional traffic they see out there. Not within Delaware County, but probably relevant to people in that part of the county. There's also a roundabout going in at Walnut Road and 605, just into Franklin County. So that's an intersection that's currently jogged. It'll actually line it up into a roundabout, and I think it'll be incorporated into New Albany, if I remember right. So. And that, again, is an example. That was a project that was already planned and needed, but maybe was accelerated with this investment. So. And then the yellow lines are actually studies more so. You'll see ODOT's widening State Route 161 already today. We'll have that open by the end of 2024, ahead of the plant, to help people get out to the site from Columbus. And then we're also studying both 37 and also 161, and also US 62, to really understand in depth, what is the level of investment needed out there? And I'll highlight 37. We're really looking about 10 years out. What can we, what do we need to do? What do we need to invest in to get us to that point? And then we have a longer term look around the state, including that corridor, to look more like 30 years down the road. So I expect that 37 study will recommend additional roundabouts and intersection improvements. Those are usually the pinch points on any corridor. Try to identify what ones will provide the most benefit for both safety and traffic. Any questions on that? I think it's, it's a good, good investment in the area, and I think it'll, it'll go a good ways to help mitigate the growth. I know it's been, it's been a lot for people in the county as a whole, and also certainly in the eastern couple of townships. So.
Tony, there's been, there's been conversation, I don't know how, I don't know how relevant it is, but the, taking a new road from 37 east of Sunbury, around Sunbury to the north and connecting into 71, is that, is there any validity to that conversation?
Nothing planned, but that'd be something we'll study with that statewide corridor, just to understand what's the need. Really want to understand where's population going long-term. It will be Delaware County. I don't think that's any shock to anyone here, but to understand where, where are people going to need to be, and where do they want to go, and what transportation investments need to be made to serve them. So that could be something that could be vetted in that study. So. But nothing, there's no, no ODOT project on the books to do that today. Any other questions for Intel, or is it any impacts you guys are hearing that we should maybe turn our eyes to?
Could you explain number two a little bit more?
Yeah, and I apologize. It's right into Licking County, and my screen is awful small.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's...
I think it's investment in Green Chapel, if I remember correctly. A lot of those local roads that sort, that kind of are around the perimeter of...
Duncan Plain.
Oh, okay.
Green Chapel.
Oh, okay.
I think it's mostly, they're, they're very small county roads, very thin, not able to handle the traffic, but also very wavy. So they're trying to rebuild them and make them more modern.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Licking County's TID has that identified as a sort of a de facto bypass of Johnstown. People are going to use those existing roads, and so they need to upgrade and study those routes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it does. Johnstown's really the bullseye.
Oh, gosh. A lot of change.
Yeah.
Yep, a lot of growth. So hopefully they're, they're getting, getting through it. We'll see. We try to talk with locals as much as we can, just to understand what they're seeing, because often they, they get info, we don't always, till we, till we see that traffic study. So, yeah. I didn't have a slide for this, but one other project for next year I do want to draw attention to. I've already talked with the, the sheriff and everything, but there's a bridge under 23 just north of Mika Road, or excuse me, just south of it, but it's in front of Turkey Hill, and needs replaced. So next season, we're actually going to have a, a two-week period where we have 23 down to one lane in each direction. And basically, we're going to bring in all the resources and rebuild the thing very quickly. But it'll probably be an unpleasant two weeks, to say it mildly.
Really.
Because basically, we would have restricted it by a lane or two for the whole season, and building it in little strips was the other choice, because we have ecological preserve and easement on one side and a business very close to the other side. So we said, well, this is the best way to do this and try to rip the Band-Aid off. So fair warning, and you can, yeah, you can send the phone calls our way when they, when they come up. But definitely working with Sheriff Ballzer and our State Highway Patrol to try to mitigate that. We're actually trying to do things like put message boards up even as far north as 229 to let people know, well, hey, maybe there's an incident on 23. Maybe you want to take a state route over to bypass, because there, there's going to be a lot of growth, a lot of impact out here. Try to give people the information they need. A message board is one way. Anyone can see it with their eyes. But we're also trying to find a way to push out alerts to their phones, and also truckers have a system called DriveWise that'll bring up an alert that says, hey, there's an incident 10 miles ahead. Consider going 36 over to 71 down. So trying to do, do all the things we can to, to help get people where they want to go. So. And that's a good segue to another initiative we have, not a, you know, bricks and mortar improvement, but something we're doing to go into the next part of technology. We're working with the EMA 911 Dispatch Center, and actually working with Honda, and I believe Ford. And we're actually going to share, anytime there's a vehicle that has an airbag deployed message, they have telemetrics that they send. It'll give that, just that location info, nothing else, to the 911 dispatch, so they can get somebody on the road just that much faster, not wait for a call. So we're going to pilot that within the Delaware County EMA response area. So we're pretty excited about that. Yeah. And also looking to get information back, and also, all these new vehicles collect a lot of information about temperature, ground conditions, different things. Want to try to aggregate that and inform our people. Maybe 23's starting to get cold and icing and drifting in the north part of the county. They might tell us, hey, watch that. Go send an extra truck up there and start blasting it with more salt. Get ahead of it before you just have to report from the next time the driver makes this 40-minute circuit up there. So we're trying to do new things and try to be, be more effective in what we have. So. Another thing we're piloting in Delaware County and also trying to get the most out of 23 as we can. So. I think that's a lot of it. The 37 study I talked about will also include Berlin Business Park and kind of that section between Delaware and 71. We've done some different improvements, kind of modeled that to understand as those things come online, what do we need? Probably similar to what we have at Old State, kind of those R-cuts, where we go past and do a U-turn back, and also working with the township and the county, is there a need for other improvements out there as those areas change or different things come up? So definitely watching that area, studying it, trying to be ready, because we know we'll fix the interchange with the interchange project, but we don't want them to go into a more congested area later on. So. Any areas you haven't heard about or have concern on? I, I didn't talk a lot about the southwest part of the county, but we've made, made some investments pretty recently. So.
The 23 corridor, what would, from beginning to end, what timeframe are you going to be talking about? How many years?
Yeah, we'll, we'll wrap up this study by the end of 2024, and that'll have that plan of, you know, inter- you know, intersection improvement here, interchange here, consolidate these driveways. And then we'll advance each of those individual projects on their own. We won't sell a two-billion-dollar improvement. We'll sell a bunch of little ones. But probably the first ones that'll come online are probably those Coover and Two-Twenty-Nine intersections. Um, Coover has Buckeye Valley High School. Wanna see that improved for safety reasons. Two-Twenty-Nine's very similar and also has a pretty big farm-to-market component. Those are already gonna be starting, um, outreach and design here after the first of the year. Probably the soonest they would go is about three years out, because you're gonna go through that environmental process, talk to the property owners if we need to buy any land, and then go through construction. So that'd be kind of the near term, and then, you know, be frank, I think I'm gonna be pulling good projects off of this study for the rest of my career. Probably won't do it all at once in the next ten years, but I'm still pretty young, but, you know. Probably over the next ten to fifteen years, we'll be doing, doing more improvements.
So ten-plus years, obviously.
Yeah, and we'll try to, we'll try to prioritize the ones that are, obviously by safety first. What, what are the ones that can give us the most benefit? And prioritize those.
I had a question on, uh, Wilson Road and Thirty-six, Thirty-seven, like, right now. I noticed, um, like, when I come, uh, west on Wilson Road, there's a signal there. And then, um, on the other side, people going east, like trucks and everything else, they actually do a U-turn?
Mm-hmm.
And so, that won't continue. I know you said maybe for a little bit.
It will continue, and it'll actually be emphasized for the next calendar year as that movement for part of it.
Okay.
And then it'll, it'll likely go back to what it is today.
Okay.
There, there's probably gonna be additional need for projects and changes in that area long-term.
But that is legal?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thank, some of those trucks, believe me, don't make it. I mean, then they have to back up.
No.
A little benefit of this, we'll be carving back some of the things, um, on the north side of Thirty-six, Thirty-seven, so they have a little more...
Right, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Um, I don't know, anybody else? Chris, any comments? Again, our Chris Bosman, our engineer's here and...
Is it okay if I don't come up to the podium?
Oh, sure, just...
Yeah, I just, I, I think it's, uh, noteworthy that Tony's even here. I mean, that, uh, that's, that's a, we applaud your outreach and your willingness. I know, I assume you're, we're not, we're not special here in Delaware County. I assume you're doing this everywhere across the district, but, uh, I, I certainly appreciate the gesture, and more than that, I appreciate the working relationship we have with ODOT. Very few of the projects that we do are confined just to things under our jurisdiction.
Hmm.
Uh, the, uh, the scope of our projects being we have multiple partners and probably our most frequent and important partners, ODOT. And, uh, and Tony and his team are, uh, are great to work with, and we have really good relationships there. I appreciate your commitment to keep it that way.
Yep, definitely, yep.
Tony, I just wanna emphasize what Chris said, because I was gonna say before he walked away was the fact you took time to come here and do this is, uh, I think really helpful and beneficial, and it helps us when we get our questions that we're gonna get. And, uh, so thank you very, very much for doing that.
Thank you very much for having me. Um, yeah, definitely trying to hit all the counties, but you are my home county, so I'll leave you to draw any conclusions about your, your specialness, but definitely rooting for you, so, root for us. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Again, appreciate the, the working relationship and, and your willingness, your willingness to come here and update us. I probably get more questions about road projects than any others from, you know, from residents, and we really appreciate knowing what's going on.
Yep. It's the, uh, the privilege and the responsibility of impacting every Ohioan every day.
Right, right.
Imagine that.
And you don't, and it's not easy.
Yeah.
We appreciate the effort.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer?
All right, item number nine, resolution number two-three-dash-nine-zero-eight, in the matter of accepting the recommendations of the Delaware County Tax Incentive Review Councils for Tax Year Twenty-Twenty-Two.
So move, second.
Question?
Good morning, Commissioners Monica Connors, Director of Economic Development. Here to request, uh, approval of the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Councils. Uh, the councils met on August thirty-first. They were chaired by Sherri Lewis from the Auditor's Office. We had a hundred percent attendance. Our school districts were all in attendance. And the recommendations were a hundred percent in favor to continue, uh, the programs.
And the...
And we have a debrief meeting set up internally so that we can continue to do some process improvements on this process. As the county continues to grow, our, uh, Tax Incentive Review Councils will also grow.
And the companies are in compliance?
Yes.
Yeah, again, that's very important. Monitor that, so thank you.
Right.
Um, questions, comments? All right, take a vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-three-dash-nine-zero-eight, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-three-dash-nine-zero-nine, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation.
So move, second.
Question?
Good morning, Commissioners, Karen First, Fiscal Manager. This supplemental appropriation is being requested by the Auditor's Office so they can pay out an unclaimed inheritance that has been ordered by the probate court.
Okay, uh, vote please.
Vote on motion two-three-dash-nine-zero-nine, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three-dash-nine-one-zero, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation.
So move, second.
Discussion?
And this supplemental appropriation is being requested for the Radnor Township Ditch Project. The Engineer's Office is ready to go to construction and award the bid.
Okay, questions, comments? Vote please.
Vote on motion two-three-dash-nine-one-zero, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Thanks, Karen.
Resolution number two-three-dash-nine-one-one, in the matter of approving reappointments to the Delaware County Transit Board.
So move, second.
Discussion?
Good morning, Eric White, Communication Specialist. Uh, before you, it's a resolution to reappoint two members to the Delaware County Transit Board. Beth Eastday Futrick and Benjamin Turner have both expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the board. Uh, they would have terms that would end October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. Right, again, I appreciate both of them willing, being willing to serve. Again, this, this organization's undergoing some long-range planning and some transformation, and so, and these are a couple of valued members of the boards, and it's good to see that they're willing to continue. Um, vote, Jennifer, please.
Vote on motion two-three-dash-nine-one-one, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
That brings us to Administrator Reports.
Good morning, Tracy Davies, County Administrator. I, uh, attended the Delaware County Transit Strategic Plan Steering Committee earlier this week. This was our second meeting. They continue to make some good progress on their strategic planning, and hopefully that will wrap up, um, by the end of the year, early next year. They're really trying to focus on, uh, their future needs. That's it.
Okay.
I have nothing, thank you.
Eric, anything? Okay, um, Mr. Merrill?
Just a couple of things. Uh, we had our Area Eighteen, uh, uh, meeting, the OPIT group that we meet. That Area Eighteen was met last night. It was a good meeting, and we met the new director and, uh, thought it went really well, and, uh, I think we're, we have a level of optimism we probably haven't had for a while because I think she's five weeks in the position and she can hit the ball running, and Jeff Fix has done a great job representing our area at the state level, so. Well done, and we have regional planning tonight. It'll be our first time in Bixby.
Oh, that's right.
So, uh, so, uh, I think everybody's looking forward to that, and, uh, I think that building's gonna get a lot of use meeting-wise down there, I'm pretty sure. That's all I have.
Yes, I went to the Vertiv Open Ha, well...
Oh, did you go to that?
Yeah, yeah.
I went too, I missed ya.
It, it was really interesting. Um, Vertiv has been in Delaware County for a while, this particular facility, but, but this is a worldwide company, twenty-six thousand employees, billions of dollars, and, uh, it's, it's amazing. Uh, the people who, and I'm not gonna name the names just because I don't know if any of this is, is, uh, to be kept private, but, uh, let's put it this way, the companies that they deal with, um, are, are really all used every day, recognized, but, uh, basically, they had a ribbon cutting because they're increasing the employees at this plant in, in Delaware. Uh, four hundred employees, uh, right now. This is really, as it was explained, uh, their, their plant, the plant is on Pittsburgh Road. And, uh, this is, this is really their, their power plant. They have two other plants, uh, as part of their worldwide headquarters, which is on Cleveland Avenue, just north of Polaris.
Right, Delaware County?
Delaware County. So, I mean, it's really big stuff, and, um, and it, it was just very interesting. We had a tour of the plant and, uh, several, uh, people were there too from, uh, Delaware City. Monica and I were, uh, representing the county. And, uh, just amazing what, what they do. The, the plants that do the cooling, as I mentioned, are, I'm, I'm not sure, they are newer, I believe, um, those facilities, um, but then this one has been here longer. I'm not, I'm not quite sure how long they've been here, but the expansion was the major thing.
Yeah, I think it's forty-some years, because it's the old Liebert Corporation.
That's right, it is, it is. That's right, mm-hmm, it is Liebert, so, so, uh, so very interesting. They, they gave a great tour, so, glad to represent the county, and that's all I have.
Yeah, it's, uh, Vertiv is a five-billion-dollar company.
I think, well, it's now, since you said it, it's now ten.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they grew five, just in this.
Well, they, and they're headquartered here in Delaware County. We, we didn't, didn't know them very well, so
Right.
Good to, good to learn that, and, and again, the technology of what they do is way beyond my knowledge base, but it was interesting to, uh, to hear about it. It's, it's fascinating stuff.
Yeah, it, it was, it was, it's totally amazing. I, I won't try and explain this.
And they do a lot of projects for data centers, um, which are becoming very
Yes.
big, big business here as well as around the country. Um, uh, let's see, got a SEPCO board meeting tomorrow, legislative update. We had our records commission meeting. Um, yesterday went fine. Chris Shaw continues doing an outstanding job. She's really helped a lot with the organizations, the departments and offices who have moved out to Bixby, so she's been very busy the last, uh, month or two and, and working with the sheriff to get, to get the stuff that doesn't need to be moved, not moved, and the stuff does need to be moved, moved correctly. Um, so, anyway, again, Chris does a nice job. Um, that's it for me. We've got executive session for a couple of topics.
We do. Resolution number two-three-dash-nine-one-two, in the matter of a journey into executive session for consideration of appointment, employment of a public employer, public official, and for pending or imminent litigation.
So move, second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three-dash-nine-one-two, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
All right, we're now in executive session.